Welcome to the Tuesday, April 23 Board of Education meeting. I apologize for our late start time. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM to talk about student residency, employment of employee, collective negotiations, and to approve the March 19, 2013, and April 10, 2013, closed session minutes. Next on our agenda, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) "To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
And the best part of any school board meeting is student recognition. The first on our agenda is the American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese Junior Travel Award at the high school level.
Yes. I would like to introduce Beth Ledoff, and she is going to be introducing our star pupil that will be traveling extensively on behalf of himself and the district. So Beth.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Beth Ledoff. I'm a Spanish teacher at York High School, and it's my pleasure to introduce you to Matt Niviera and tell you about his amazing accomplishment this year in the Spanish language. Matthew's been very fortunate to have been a part of the language program here in District 205, and many Spanish teachers have had the pleasure of teaching him, specifically Jean Olson, Amy Hassel, Kelly Carbonaro, Nancy Byrne, Yuri Diaz, and myself. Every year, AATSP sponsors the National Spanish Contest. Matthew has participated in these contests both as a freshman and a sophomore at York, where he scored above the 75th percentile both years. This year, Matthew came to me in the fall with an interest in participating in the Junior Travel Award Contest, which is also sponsored by the organization. The Junior Travel Award has an involved application process. Besides submitting transcripts and letters of recommendation, Matthew submitted an essay in Spanish, writing about an aspect of Costa Rican culture that he would like to explore if he had an opportunity to visit the country. And also, Matthew submitted a two-minute video clip where he talked in Spanish about how this trip would impact his life and why he would be a worthy recipient of the Junior Travel Award. There were numerous students from across the country that applied for this Junior Travel Award, and we were so delighted that the committee recognized, just as we all know, how amazing and gifted Matthew is in the Spanish language. By winning this award, Matthew's going to travel to Costa Rica for 10 days in July with 12 other students from around the country, where he will be doing some volunteering work, visiting local villages, but he's also going to get to visit some amazing places such as the Arenal Volcano National Park and the Santa Elena Biological Reserve. So he's got a very interesting summer and fun trip, it sounds like. I tried to put in a shameless plug if I could go along, if they needed any chaperones. I've already tried to work that angle, but that doesn't look like it's going to happen. So I'm going to settle for some pictures and conversation with them when we get back to York in the fall. So felicidades, Matthew. We're all so proud of you. You deserve this award so much, and we're just so delighted that you won it. Thank you, everybody. Great job. Great job.
Please don't go anywhere. Stay right here. It's my honor to be able to read this proclamation in honor of Matthew. Whereas, the American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese, also known as the AATSP, promotes the study and teaching of Spanish and Portuguese languages at all levels of education. And whereas, through extensive collaboration with educators, professionals, and institutions in other countries, the AATSP contributes to a better and deeper understanding between the United States and the Spanish and Portuguese-speaking nations of the world. And whereas, to apply for the Junior Travel Award Contest, applicants must have participated in the National Spanish Exam as a freshman and a sophomore and have scored above the 75th percentile for both years. And whereas, this rigorous application process requires submitting transcripts, letters of recommendations from teachers and counselors, and a written essay in Spanish. And whereas, Matthew Niviera, York Community High School junior, was named only one of 12 students chosen from across the country to receive the Junior Travel Award, allowing him the opportunity to travel to Costa Rica for 10 days in July of 2013. And whereas, this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit District 205 express congratulations to Matthew, his parents, and elementary, middle, and high school Spanish teachers Nancy Byrne, Kelly Carbonaro, Yuri Diaz, Amy Hassel, Beth Ledoff, and Joan Olson for this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations. Thank you. I'll give you a copy of the resolution and a copy of the program.
pleasure to introduce Rebecca Marinetti, who will be introducing us. By the way, Rebecca is just off of some really outstanding reviews on the latest musical production, Tarzan, from this past weekend, so.
Is that how I do it? Yes. Hi, so my name is Becky Marinetti, and I teach performing arts, music, and drama over at York. And I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing Clara tonight. Clara was a member, back in March, of the American Choral Directors Association National Honors Choir, which took place in Texas. And way back in December, when she decided that she was going to audition for this choir, it's a national choir. So, American Choral Directors Association is a group of educators all across the country, K through 12, and also collegiate and professional choirs as well. And they have this huge national conference every year where they recognize different choirs from across the world, not just across the country. And then they have several honors choirs within the middle school and high school level that students are allowed to audition for. So Clara had to come into school and work really hard to make a CD that would earn her a spot in this choir. She had to do not just a piece of music, but scales and all sorts of examples of her range and how she could sing in a choir of this magnitude. And we were thrilled that she was selected, and so then she got to travel to Texas. She has stated that it's the most significant musical experience that she's had, and I think that anytime you go and you sing or make music with people who are not just as talented, but as motivated and dedicated as you are to the process, it's such a big deal. And I know that those things stick with you forever. So we are so proud of her. Clara is in our Sophomore Girls Choir, which is our choraliers, and next year will be in our top curricular choir at York, which is our concert choir. And she was also just in Tarzan, and so she's a big part of the York program and a wonderful singer and student, and we're so pleased for her. So, thank you Clara.
Once again, let me stay right here.
We will.
And it is again my honor to read a proclamation in honor of Clara's accomplishments. Whereas, the American Choral Directors Association, also known as the ACDA, is a not-for-profit music education organization whose central purpose is to promote excellence in choral music through performance, composition, publication, research, and teaching. And whereas, the ACDA consists of choral directors who represent more than 1 million singers across the United States. And whereas, York sophomore Clara Stisowski auditioned and was selected from over 3,600 students to become a member of the ACDA National Honor Choir and attend the national conference held in Dallas in March of 2013. And whereas, the National Honor Choir challenged its 300 students by requiring eight-hour daily rehearsals of rigorous music selections and offering participants the opportunity to perform under the direction of some of the nation's most distinguished choral directors. And whereas, Clara is the first York Community High School student to be selected as the National Honor Choir participant, and two years ago was named one of only three other York students to be chosen as a middle school honor choir member. And whereas, this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to Clara, her parents, and high school choral teacher Becky Marinetti for this outstanding accomplishment.
(Applause). Okay. So as we say in the theater, I missed my cue. I'd be mad if that were my student. We do have an audio clip, right, that we are set to play, and so I was supposed to say that, which of course I remembered when I stepped back. So this is just a 30-second clip of the rehearsal process at ACDA.
Now, we can take a 30-second break if anybody needs to go home, do some homework.
Housework. Clean up.
Yeah, yeah, shoveling water out of your basement. And then the next thing on our agenda is public comments. So I have two. One from Mrs. Talbot, and the other from Mrs. Stisowski. So, are there any others besides these two? Okay. Word. Give me the word. You took the long way. So if you could just lead with just stating your name and your address, and thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carla Talbot. My address is 679 South Stratford in Elmhurst, and my other address is Field Library. I come here tonight to express my gratitude to Mr. Schu and his crew, who spent the weekend in the basement cleaning up after the storm. The original picture I saw with water knee-deep was overwhelming, to say the least. The picture I got Sunday night before I went to bed with a clean library, awesome floor, things pretty much back in place, with the exception of the books to be returned to the shelves, was truly amazing. So, thank you, Mr. Schu. Thank you to Mr. Christopherson, who is not my regional supervisor, but works on the other side of York Road, who spent the weekend there. My building maintenance, and as I fondly call them, the Schu Crew, who spent their weekend in the basement to make it look awesome for the students at Fields, too. So, a big shout-out, thank you, Mr. Schu and your crew.
Hello. I am Karen Stisowski. I live at 487 South York Street here in Elmhurst. And tonight, I would like to address my comments to all who serve on the school board, but most especially to Mrs. Deroney and Mrs. Hirsch. I am speaking on behalf of the thousands of Elmhurst children whose lives and futures you have improved through your thoughtful and selfless service to our community. As one who is often in your peanut gallery, I have seen many, many hours of your time and the wealth of your knowledge and experience that you have given to our children, always with their best intentions at heart. Your unwavering commitment to our community and to this unpaid yet crucial position has been a testament to your character and your souls. As a parent and community member, I would like to thank you for everything that you have given of yourselves to our children, to my children, and to wish you all the best in your future endeavors. I sincerely thank you for your service.
And next week, on April 30, we'll be having a special meeting of the Board to recognize our outgoing members and to swear in our incoming school board members. And that'll be at 7:30 on the 30th of April. Next on our agenda this evening is superintendent's communication. Mr. Purnell.
Yes. With the Board's indulgence this evening, I have two other items on the agenda under this agenda item. And so I'd like to start with, as long as we're on this roll again, another recognition that was not part of the Board recognition, and is not really a resolution, but we'd like to honor one of my administrators who has been nominated for a significant award. So with that, I'm going to ask John Glimko, Principal Brian, and Ryan Anderson, also a principal at Jackson, I'm sorry, mental break. And I believe the honoree is coming up too, or later? Oh, here she comes. So with that, John and Ryan will lead this.
Mr. Purnell and members of the Board, I thank you for this opportunity to be here, wearing a different hat, as I'm representing the professional organization, Elementary Principals Association, where we, Ryan and I, both serve on the regional board for DuPage County. Each year, the Elementary Principals Association asks for nominees for Principal of the Year, Elementary Principal of the Year, that would represent our county. And we sort through nominees that come from principals and superintendents and have the opportunity to look at some great stories and be able to pick one, and a tough choice to pick one to recognize. It's very exciting to see that our Board picked one that not only that we are familiar with, but have the opportunity to work side-by-side with. And so I'm going to let Ryan talk a little bit more about our candidate.
Thank you, John. Well, good evening, Board of Education, Mr. Purnell, members of the administration, and community members. It is my absolute pleasure and privilege to briefly share with you some of the wonderful qualities of my friend and colleague Cindy Gotha, who was selected by our DuPage Region's IPA Board for recognition of the DuPage County Elementary Principal of the Year. Well, first, Cindy has, this is her 40th year in education as a professional educator, so that alone is noteworthy. She's served about equally in the classroom setting as a teacher, as well as in various leadership roles, including early childhood program director and special education supervisor, and then of course, most recently, these eight years as principal at Field School. Some background on her leadership positions in the area and civic relationships that she's held up. She's been our big contact with the Midwest Principals Center, serving on the governing board, also been related to the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation and the Brain Aneurysm Foundation, and has been very active in her local community as part of her church congregation, even serving as the Sunday School Superintendent for a period of time. So, Mr. Purnell, you can connect on that, on that level with her. Amongst some of the wonderful awards and honors that she's helped to bring to Field, Field has been the recipient of the Academic Excellence Award from ISBE for many of the past several years, and a few years ago was highlighted in the Chicago Sun-Times, which rated Field School 40th in the surrounding counties for the Chicagoland area. Cindy is very invested in both her profession and District 205. Within this district, she's served among various committees throughout her time here, including areas such as our RTI Committee, Discipline Committee. Back when early childhood curriculum was need to be developed, she worked with her school and her staff to help write that curriculum. Is currently serving on the Writing Committee. Very recently, within the last year, when the negotiations for the teacher's contract was wrapping up, she served on that contractual team. A lot of dedication there. Again, more regionally, she's been a part of Harvard Data Wise Conference and has in numerous ways been involved with the Professional Learning Communities Conference that she has helped to bring to her staff. To help you get to know Cindy a little bit more in terms of her personal ethics and vision, throughout all of her years of working as an educator, she strongly feels that she needs to challenge students to grow, and that's grow academically, as well as advance themselves emotionally and develop really a deep love of learning and just gaining skills all throughout their childhood. And with that, helping to foster a sense of service and curiosity and inquiry as they go about their day. And this is something that she continually communicates with the staff that she works. A collaborative approach certainly describes Cindy Gotha. It's foundational to how she approaches her days and how she's come to value her work and the opinions of the staff that engage with her each week. She tries to be forward-thinking in terms of research and the best practices that are used. One in particular, she was at the forefront of helping to lead among the elementary schools the flexible math design that's currently used at many of the elementaries, and she was on the forefront of that, along with trying to connect writing program to the common core pieces. In terms of how she tries to approach work with her school, a family would be the best way to describe the atmosphere at Field School and how she's tried to foster that. And as part of that sense of family, her students' families, the parents, and those pieces are very important to the work that she does with her staff each day. Just wanted to quote a few of the people, a few of the staff members that had written letters of support for her nomination with this. From her special ed team, Cindy is not just a principal, she is an educator at heart. Although she has assumed a leadership role in the building, it is as though she never left her classroom teaching position. She takes pride in the fact that she is able to develop a personal relationship with each of the students in her building. From a third-grade teacher, when she introduces new program, Cindy trains the staff and puts support in place for them to work effectively. She is always thinking ahead so that the students and teachers have everything they need to do their best every single day. From one of her kindergarten teachers, I have felt her support in numerous ways, professionally and personally. Cindy has always been a listening ear and a compassionate heart. And from one of her teams of teachers, and this I think summarizes it very well, the climate of Field School is very positive and supportive. When addressing the school community, Miss Gotha makes sure to end discussions with the phrase, "Make it a great day," impacting both staff and students to make it their best day possible. Congratulations, Cindy.
(Applause). So proud of you.
Thank you.
Well, it's for you.
Thank you very much.
Let me just say that Cindy is really, we talk a lot about master teachers among our teachers, who's a master teacher, which is that teacher that you want to clone and kind of distribute among the rest of the teaching staff. We have a lot of master teachers in Elmhurst, but we also have a number of master principals. Cindy is certainly one of them, and it has been a pleasure in the two years I've worked with Cindy. Just that talk with her about her insights, her educational knowledge, the innovation as they talked about. Cindy's always thinking one or two terms ahead about what can be done at Field. She's a dedicated field principal, really cares a lot for her students, and that's one of many wonderful qualities Cindy has. Her only flaw is, and I have to bring this up, don't tell her a secret. I had a conversation with Cindy one day in her office, and she was talking to her secretary about Dutton Abbey. And I went into her office and said, you know, I don't want anybody to know this, and it's like my guilty pleasure, but I love Dutton Abbey. So we got into this conversation about Dutton Abbey. We no sooner got out of that conversation, she opened her office door and looked at her secretaries and said, "Look, he's a Dutton Abbey fan." I was so embarrassed. But really, Cindy is just one of the great stars we have in Elmhurst, so congratulations, Cindy.
Mr. Purnell, thank you, Board of Education.
Cindy, before you go sit down, would you come shake the Board's hand? We would all love to congratulate you.
I, just part of the agenda, the district received two FOIA requests since our last business meeting. Both requests for contracts with district providers, and both requests were granted. Second item that is on your agenda is just to update again on the budget situation. The Board has asked that there's always be an ongoing budget discussion with the Board. I just wanted to clarify some of my comments from the last board meeting. I think, as the Board knows, but I want to make sure the public understands too, we are in the process of looking at a variety of alternatives and possibilities for looking at how we can run the district more efficiently, how we can provide a quality education for perhaps less costs, given the economic situation. And that was a task that the Board of Education gave my administrative team. And so I want the public to understand, though, that there is no proposals at this time that we are taking forward at this moment, and there is nothing that we have in the works that is all of a sudden going to be sprung on the public. That's not how this district operates. Any proposal that the administration comes forward with in the future about restructuring the district will certainly be in public. There will be lots of opportunity for public comment. As I said at the last meeting, none of these discussions are going to be easy discussions when it comes to how you resize a school district for the economic realities of what we find. But at the same time, the challenge is to look at all of those options, have thoughtful discussions with the Board, with the community, with our faculty and staff, and then come up with the best options, given those circumstances, for both the short-term and long-term health of the school district and for those students. So, given that, I just want the Board to understand that we are continuing with those discussions, and sometime in probably the framework of June, July, August, we will start solidifying some of those proposals, to then start talking with the Board about to bring forward for public discussion, both in the short-term and long-term, to address some of those budget discussion issues. As far as the present budget goes and what the projections are, nothing really has changed from the state right now, or from any other sources for revenue or expenditures. We seem to be in a lull right now as far as the state of Illinois goes, and any proposals from Illinois have not been forthcoming, the pension. There's no new groundbreaking information on that, and so we're And so, we're kind of in a holding pattern. We're, again, we're basing our assumptions on the PMA assumptions, both in the short-term and long-term, and so that's what's driving that restructuring discussion. So, I don't know if the Board has any questions at this time, but in the spirit of just keeping everyone informed, that's the process we're into right now.
Any questions for the superintendent? Hearing none?
One other item that's not on the agenda, as you know, we had a very unusual circumstance on Thursday, and in the first time in my career as superintendent, I had the pleasure of calling school off because of flood, rain, Noah's Ark Day, as some people have called it. The complication here is that the Board of Education, at the last board meeting, already declared the end of the year, and we have published those dates, plans have moved ahead for the end of school, finals at York, promotion ceremonies in eighth grade. We also, as we looked at our calendar, we have 177 instructional days that Elmhurst has students attend. The minimum requirement for the state of Illinois is 175. Therefore, what that means is, we do not have to make up and have an emergency day to extend the calendar if we wish not to do that. Given that we've already published the ending dates of the year, we already have plans and have let parents know that we have published the end of the year, and people are making, have made plans, people are making plans, eighth grade promotion, I know people come out of town to make those. Rather than change all that, my recommendation would be to continue with the end-of-the-year calendar that the Board has already approved, and continue this year with 176 instructional days this year. This is a very unusual circumstance. As you know, we don't come to the Board until after spring break to make this recommendation. Most, most years, that is plenty of opportunity to make up those emergency days, but because this occurred after the Board declared the end of the calendar, my recommendation would be to keep the calendar as it is for this year and then move ahead. Again, in the future, however, just to be clear, we would always make up an emergency day before that declaration of the end of the year. We would make up all those days as we normally do in this district. It's just that this act of God day was so unusual, I think it probably lends itself to finishing up the school year with the approved calendar.
Mrs. Hirsch?
Well, we want as much instruction for our students. I mean, that's our purpose for being. I think your decision to call school off on Thursday was the right decision. We had water in several buildings, not just in Field School, but I think anybody that tried to travel on Thursday realized how difficult and challenging it would have been, and I think the right decision was to call school for the safety of our staff and our students. So, I'm sure it wasn't an easy one. First time, I think, you said in your career, you've had to call school for rain, but I think it was a good decision. So, thank you, Mr. Purno.
Any other thoughts on this? If we decide, since we've already declared the end of school, we've already declared the middle school and high school promotions, if we decide not to end, not to add a day to the calendar to make up for that day, we don't need to do anything here. So, would that be our consensus, is to leave things as is? Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
Then, the next thing on our agenda is the approval of board meeting minutes from March 19th and April 10th, 2013. Are there any amendments to those meeting minutes? Mrs. Stufan?
Yes, I have some amendments to the March 19th meeting minutes, page five, the committee reports. It indicates Ms. Hirsch for the Board Improvement and Policy Committee, it should be Mrs. Stufan. Sorry, but... Secondly, the sentence that indicates stadium use and the York Community Advisory Council Thank you.
Any other changes for anyone? We, so, we let the, given the changes that Mrs. Stufan has presented, we accept those changes and let those meeting minutes then stand subsequent to the changes. That, next on our meeting is Board Committee Reports. One committee has met since our last meeting, and that is the Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met last week. There were a number of items on the agenda. The March monthly financial report is where we started. Chris Walton presented that report. I think the message there is on plan, on budget. The, Chris also gave us an update on the tax extension. I think it came in pretty much at expectations. New growth was slightly higher, but mainly the result of the inclusion of the Han area properties, the CBS Panera Han, those were released from TIF 1 and then re-tifed into TIF 4. As part of that process, their EAV was reset at current market, which showed up in new growth for us this year. So, that was about $1,003,000 of the 15, or 19.6 million of new growth. And he also noted that that new growth is in line with trend. So, if you take out the bubble years, this is about what we've expected and we've experienced over the last 10 to 12 years. On the consent agenda, you'll find a Lakeview contract agreement. There was a, it's a settlement of a dispute over interpretation of contract language. There's a positive resolution to that, and that is on the consent agenda for our approval. The York usage of East End Pool during construction. I'd like to thank the Elmhurst Park District. Chris and Dave presented that we have an intergovernmental agreement as an extension of the one we have, but for the use of the pool for the York girls swim team at no cost to the school district. We will supply our own lifeguards, but the Park District has been gracious enough to let us use the East End Pool free of charge. So, thank you. Other major things, status updates. We reviewed the TIF document that the City of Elmhurst had prepared. I think the message from there is that their surplus estimates are in line with our expectations and what we had been assuming. Summer project bids, there are a number of these bids on the consent agenda. I think Chris had kind of walked us through the bid process and their selection, but that those projects are ready to go. And so, I think everything's, unless, Chris, there's anything that's developed, I mean, we are ready to start construction in the pool and some lockers this summer. And then, the last piece on the agenda was the Legislative PowerPoint. We are working on, as you know, a number of documents. I think, you know, John is talking about a general document around kind of current state. We're taking a piece of it legislative side, I think Karen's spearheading that, and had asked the Finance Committee to take a look at the financial numbers that are in those. And so, we began that process. I spent some time with Chris Walton this afternoon in getting through that. I've got a whole set of slides with all kinds of pen marks over it that I have to go back to fix, but I think the plan would be to, you know, we continue to have these discussions. The plan would be, I think, to put this on a board agenda at some point in the near future, and the whole document there, and we can all, we can all talk through that along with our conversations, if that, if that's the will of the Board. And so, that was the last item. If anybody's got questions or comments?
Mr. McDonough?
The numbers are slightly different in the deck that Chris adjusted than the ones that I took from your previous Advisory Committee piece. So, I'm assuming the ones that Chris has are the more recent ones, percentages of revenue from local taxes, things like that. I'll talk to you later about it, that's fine. All right. Yeah, yeah, I think so.
No, I think what you're saying, we may have grabbed different years, but we'll work through that. I think Chris and Adrian were nice, Adrian had everything ticked and tied, so she's going to give me back the approved version from the Accounting Department, and so, those will drop in, we'll obviously be sharing all of those, and so, those are blessed, which I'll be happy with.
All right, let me use those, then.
Yeah, all right.
Anything else for Finance and Operations? Let me turn that over then to Mrs. Hirsch for a second.
It's not on the agenda, however. We were supposed to have a Performance Management Committee meeting on the rain day last week, so not only did we cancel school, but we also had to cancel a committee meeting that we've been trying to get going. We have some things, the things that were on the agenda for that meeting are important things that I would encourage the Board to get another meeting scheduled and get these discussions going. So, the things that were on the agenda is the Board is planning, again, this summer to do a retreat type of a meeting where the Board, and it's up to the will of the new Board in terms of how you move forward, but the purpose of these meetings over the summer are to recap and assess what successes we've had, what progress we've made towards our DPIs, as well as some work for the Board to do in terms of how the Board is operating and how efficiently and effectively we're communicating and the work of the Board. So, I encourage the other committee members that are in Performance Management, Mr. Bloom and Mrs. Stufan, to go ahead and get a meeting scheduled shortly so that we can move forward with that. The other thing on the agenda was the Administrative Compensation, ongoing discussion. And then, finally, the, probably the most important thing that the Board of Education does is that we hire the superintendent, who is our executive, who runs our school system and is our professional. And the Performance Management Committee in the recent past has headed up the superintendent's evaluation process. So, documents have been prepared, the instrument that we're going to use to evaluate, Mr. Purno. We've had many discussions at the committee level about who should be included in the conversation and participate in the process on the superintendent's evaluation for this year. And we had determined that outgoing Board members would have an opportunity to complete the instrument and provide feedback to the Board for consideration. And then, we'll have an opportunity, I'm going to meet this weekend with our new incoming Board members. We finally found a time we could get together. The intention was that we would go over the superintendent evaluation process with our new Board members so they would understand the process, but we'll take care of that this weekend, just explain how things go. But that is something that would take place, again, beginning in May and continue on into June, but that's one of our primary responsibilities, is to provide feedback to our superintendent and continue planning for the future. So, I'm sorry, couldn't pull off that meeting, but I will leave those outstanding items for remaining Board members to take on. And that's it, thank you. If anybody has any questions about the evaluation or anything, let me know.
Mrs. Stufan?
I would just say, on behalf of the Board and the Performance Management Committee, thank you very much for your leadership.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's consent agenda, and I do notice that the administration tried to use every letter of the alphabet and only missed the last two on this consent agenda. And in an effort for transparency here, if the Board will indulge me to just quickly run through items A through X before I ask if any want to be removed and before I ask for a motion. But the, the items include the standard monthly personnel report, standard monthly financial reports, approval of the 2013-14 school fees, which at the elementary and middle school level go up a little bit to pay for our new social studies curriculum, and the only change at the high school is a dollar increase for student accident insurance. The approval, and this is a yearly routine matter, the approval of the appointment of the school treasurer, the memorandum of the understanding with the Elmhurst Park District that Mr. Bloom spoke of, that while the York Aquatic Center is being repaired and re-roofed this summer, that our students will be able to use East End Pool to practice. And the approval of the study skills instructional program stipends, and I want to say thank you for the District 205 Foundation for donating the money to pay for those stipends. The approval of a donation to Hawthorne Elementary School, and let me say thank you to the Hawthorne PTA, who has generously offered to donate a copy machine. The approval of a donation to the Emerson Elementary School, and let me say thank you to the Anderson family, who is an Emerson School family, who has generously offered to donate $800 to the school library. Thank you very much. Another donation to the Hawthorne Elementary School, and let me say thank you to the Peter Truist Monument Company, who has generously offered to donate a bronze plaque for the, in the dedication of Hawthorne's new outdoor classroom. And then, approval of a lot of bids that pertain to the Aquatic Center. So, let me just stream through these. Structural steel repairs, stranded seam roofing, metal lockers, painting, bleachers, electrical work, and maybe one not so related to the Aquatic Center, musical, the purchase of musical instruments at the elementary level and at the high school level to replace some instruments that are just a little too worn. Now, back to the Aquatic Center, some duct installation, scaffolding, the approval to buy a new school activity bus and trade in our 2001 vintage activity bus on a new one. The approval of copier, printer, and scanner replacements, approval of computer procurement, and the ongoing deployment plan, approval of network equipment upgrades, approval of the JP Morgan Chase equipment lease, approval of payment and release agreement with the Lakeview Bus Lines that Mr. Bloom spoke of. And that takes us all the way through item X, so, thank you. So, I need a, first of all, let me ask, are there any items that the Board would like removed for further discussion?
If I could just highlight one that's in the personnel, I know the personnel report is usual routine, but I want to point out that this evening you will be approving the contract of Ron Murphy as the new athletic director for Elmhurst Public Schools, and I just want to go through, there was an extensive search process that was held by the York Administration. There was a screening process, and then there was a committee put together, about 25 members, that included parents, student athletes, parent boosters, the interim ADs also sat on on those, as well as coaches. So, it was a large committee that went through and interviewed a number of candidates, and it's my pleasure tonight to recommend to the Board that Ron Murphy be the, as I said, the next athletic director for Elmhurst 205. He is presently the Assistant Athletic Director at Oswego East High School. He is also a teacher and has extensive coaching background, and we're pleased to bring that to the Board tonight as part of the consent agenda. Thank you.
Any items you want removed for further discussion? Mrs. Hirsch?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda items A through X. Second?
Moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Derone, that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda items A through X, and since we're spending money, Mrs. Walsh, we need a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Derone?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. The superintendent's consent agenda items A through X passes as it stands. The next item is action items from the superintendent's agenda, the approval of a new policy stadium use policy, and this is just the first reading of that policy.
Yes, thank you. This evening, and this is just a first reading, so, just a reminder to the Board members, new policies, we go and formally present them to the Board, not under consent agenda. First readings mean that they're open for further discussion. Any changes we would make based on the Board discussion here this evening, I'm bringing it back for a second reading at the next board meeting. Let me give you some background on why this new policy is being presented to you this evening. As I know Board members recall, there was a committee forum called the York Community Advisory Council that met for a long period of time to discuss and resolve issues related to the met for a long period of time to discuss and resolve issues related to the stadium that was created by lighting and stadium use with the neighbors in the area. And it really turned out to be a win-win program that came up and was recommended to the Board and to the City Council. The neighborhood worked with the Administration. We met extensively. I was just coming in as this was finishing up, so really the credit goes to the past Administration for working through this with the neighborhood and the neighbors, and really came up with a solution that really achieved what the neighbors wanted, which was the control of the stadium for certain hours and sound and lighting, and at the same time was able to use the stadium in a functional manner that was intended with the new addition of the artificial turf. And that's what created a lot of the additional use of the stadium. When the new turf came in, it was being used quite extensively. And so there was an agreement worked out. The problem that I was brought to in January of this year, members of the Advisory Council came to me and said, "The problem we see is that while you and I and the members have a good understanding of what this agreement is, we're afraid that over time, when Boards turn over, Superintendents turn over, neighbors turn over, this agreement is going to be lost. And we think it's a solid agreement that should somehow be in policy." And so I worked with them, they came back with a draft of the possible policy. We tweaked it a little bit, came back, and I want to admit right up front that it's kind of a hybrid of a policy. It really is part guideline, part policy. But again, I think the desire is just to make sure that there is an ongoing understanding of how the stadium is going to be used, so we don't run into the problems that created the issue in the first place, which was the overuse of the stadium, all of those issues that I'm sure you all understood at the time, and I'm not going to rehash with that. So this evening, again, it's a first reading of a policy, certainly, you know, welcome your input into that policy. We do have two members of the York Community Advisory Council in the audience. I would like to, if it's okay with the Board, I'd like to offer them an opportunity to speak to the Board before you have the discussion on the policy. So with that is, any interest in speaking with the Board? They're pointing at each other. They're going to both come up. And again, I want to thank, these members, they have really been instrumental in making sure not only there was agreement, but that we're following the agreement and making sure we're following through on what's supposed to happen with that agreement.
I'm Greg Gills.
Jacob Hill.
And first of all, had I known I would be speaking in front of you tonight, I would have shaved. I would not be wearing my son's Army sweatshirt, and I would have been tired more like my neighbor.
Came from work.
That's true. I'm retired now. But I really relish the opportunity to share a few words with you. As a neighbor, also as a York graduate and a former York athlete as well, from my perspective, the thing that has happened over the last two years that's been the most unique, and I think that as a school board you should take the greatest pride in, is the unbelievable ability of your high school administration, athletic department, boosters, band people, to come together with neighbors and friends and forge what has really become a friendship, a set of really powerful relationships to solve two issues simultaneously. How can we maximize the use of the York Athletic Field to its fullest? This wonderful facility, this new turf, the use it in a manner that we can use it all day long, you can use it on weekends, sporting events, but at the same time, how can you honor and respect the neighbors and the community that are so tightly congregated around the field? And we're vulnerable to, every time a PA is turned on, the lights are turned on, issues like that. And what's been absolutely remarkable is to be able to forge that in a way that you have this group that are friends, as I said, and we have this really tight relationship. And the other thing I think you should be proud of, too, is that this has really become a model for other communities. You see other communities, and I'm sure you're aware of this, who have had issues about athletic fields and the neighbors, and they turn to us, to you, to our example, and say, "Look, it can be done. You can solve these problems, and you can create this really mutual organization." And as the doctor so eloquently said, one of our concerns is the future, the next five years, the next 10 years. And that's why we, as representatives of that committee, come before you and say, "We would like to see this woven into Board policy, the Board document, so we can ensure that in the future we have this as a model, as a template to fall back on and say, you know, this is how we operate, this is how the field works, this is how the neighborhood responds." I think it's a really unique opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. So, thank you.
I concur.
And if you have any questions, please feel free to call upon us, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. So I think that gives you the background of where we are this evening. Again, it's a little unusual, it's kind of a hybrid between guidelines and policy, but it's open for discussion this evening. Again, first reading, the intention is to get your input. If there are changes, we will make those changes, come back for a second reading at the next Board meeting.
Mrs. Stufan?
First, I wanted to make a few comments on behalf of the Board and the Board Improvement Policy Committee. We wanted to thank the YCAC membership for your work and cooperation. This is a new policy, and therefore it's the first time that the full Board is discussing it. And I know, Greg, you were at our committee meeting, and we talked about it at length. So any of the discussions really is to ensure that we memorialize the process properly, you know, the process and template that has been put in place for several years now that's working very well. So really, the discussion is about making sure that it's clear in our policy. So I just wanted to make that statement first.
Yeah, second hand I saw up was Mr. McDonough.
This is a great example of working together with the community, and I just couldn't be more thrilled about the way that it came off. And really, to hear neighbors of our high school speaking so glowingly about the Administration of the high school, that's proof right there. On the substance of the matter, I think it's important to say, the school board needs to stand by these commitments made to the committee, or made to the neighbors and the whole committee. My only question is, and I raised this with Dave at the committee meeting, was whether policy is the right vehicle to do it, because it's got some quirks that may not be flexible enough for the two parties that they want. One is that if there's a need on an emergency basis or whatever, and both parties are in agreement to vary from it, it takes a unanimous vote. So it would take only one Board member who could frustrate the desires of the community and the school board if there was an emergency of some kind and wanted to do it. The other thing is that it takes a two-thirds majority to change the policy. And so if there was some other thing, I'm just wondering if an agreement with the community or resolution standards might be a better way to show that the Board is truly committed to this, and just to correct some of these procedural irregularities of memorializing something so detailed into policy. So it's really just procedural question. And I'd just like to hear what the Board has to say.
Mrs. D'Erone, did you have something to add as well? I'm just trying to go for the order that I remember seeing.
I do, but I didn't have my hand up yet, so I'm happy to wait.
Okay, very good. Mrs. Hirsch?
I have a two-part comment. One, Greg, I was sitting in those meetings, and I know that this was not, we were not good neighbors. And it was on us that we were not respectful of our neighbors, and I'm so thrilled that we have been able to work together, not have one side just totally fold, not have the other side totally frustrated. I think we worked creatively to fix the light problem. I think we worked creatively also, I think, with the Police Department in terms of parking enforcement. I think we've been working together. And this, I am very thrilled to say, this is a market improvement in terms of our school system being neighborly. It's hard living next to a high school, I'm certain. And there's many challenges, but this is the best outcome. I think it's a collaborative process. We have invested neighbors, we have invested staff, honestly, that negotiated and are working to maintain this arrangement. And I think this is a great example for us to hold up. However, as the Chair of the Policy Committee for my first two years on the Board, and I can't count the number of policy meetings that I ran and sat through as we rewrote the entire policy manual for the Board of Education, in fact, I S B actually walked away from us and stopped coming because it took us so long to revise our policy manual, because our Board members were very invested in the words that we chose and the policy that we set. I agree with Mr. McDonough's concerns, having something so specific and detailed. I don't have a problem with the terms that we actually have, it's the location of them being in policy. The purpose of policy is to provide guidance, and it's the response, the Board of Education is providing guidance. Here is the policy that we set, and then we turn over the policies and ask the Administration to actually put implementation plans around those policies, and those implementation plans can change over time. The intention is the policy is going to live for a very long time, and that's really the only role of a Board member, is to set policy, to negotiate it, to argue it, to come up with a compromise, and then turn it over to the Administration. So it goes against my grain to say that we put Monday through Thursday, 5:30 a.m. through 9:00 p.m. in a policy document. A policy is to give guidance about what the intentions were. If I had to characterize, I would say that it is, at least my intention as a Board member, I would hope that it would be the concurrence of the full Board, that our intention is to maximize the effectiveness of all of our facilities and to make them available to as many taxpayers and organizations as we can, and to be excellent neighbors in the process, and to mitigate and negotiate any challenges that do arise. But this is way too detailed for my comfort level. Now, I'm obviously leaving very shortly. This can move forward, and policy can take on a new form, but I will say that I have invested personally many, many, many hours in policy, and this is not really a good place for this type of direction. You can choose to leave it in policy. I realize that it's kind of a unique thing in terms of making it public to the neighbors, but I caution, because we have other facilities as well, and we have terms and rules about the facility usage, and I would, I really don't think it's a wise decision to start putting implementation details in our policy. With that said, I don't have any problems with the agreement. I'm thrilled that we're being much better neighbors, that the agreement needs to stand and needs to be documented. I'm just not sure that this is the right place for it to live. But with that, I'll stop.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yeah, I agree, this is an oddball policy, but in our committee meeting, we discussed how we don't have administrative procedures at this point in time, so it's a solution with what we have in place to have it as a policy. And I think to Mr. McDonough's point, I believe that when the community came to us, that the two members, they do want it more difficult to, they don't want a quick change, so that would go against with what you're saying. But anyway, that's my, I think it's okay, it's not the best way to house something like this, to have it in policy, but there's an absence of administrative procedures, which we're working on, Administration is working on. So it's a solution to what the community members are looking for.
Mrs. D'Erone?
I too applaud the cooperation between the York Administration and the neighborhood group. I think it was a terrific outcome to be able to come up with a working solution that everybody can agree on and is happy with. I mean, you don't often get those kinds of situations. It's great that we have done that. Whether or not this document belongs in our policy manual is quite problematic to me as well. I could see ways of writing a policy that would affect the same thing but not have this level of detail in it. Now, I wasn't at your meeting, so I don't know all the conversation that went before, but for example, just a statement that by July 30th of each year, the York Community Advisory Council will meet to decide on priority of use, hours of operation, conditions for lighting and sound, the three areas that you have here in your policy. And then you would have to spell out what this committee, this York Community Advisory Council, who's on it, the different positions, not names, of course, but different positions, how many people are going to be on it, and how they will rule. Is it unanimous, you know, so that one person doesn't like one thing, be it a neighbor or a York official, and it's down? Is it majority rule? You know, that at least has to be cleared up in this policy before this policy can go forward. Even if you want to leave all of that detail in there, you don't spell out in here anywhere what approval, and number six under priority of usage, what approval means. You just say approval. You know, you don't know, is it majority, is it two-thirds, is it everybody has to agree? You also don't spell out who's on this committee. How many neighbors are there, and what kind of, how many administrators are there? Is it top-heavy administrators? Is it top-heavy neighbors? Is it equal? And then once you've decided that, how will you decide how decisions get made from that committee? I mean, I think it's a great idea to have it written down somewhere so that we don't ever get into the situation where we were bad neighbors. I absolutely agree. But this particular document needs a little work before I could approve it. Of course, I'm not going to be approving it in the end anyway, so you can take whatever I say with a grain of salt. But the other thing that really needs to be changed in here is this exceptions rule under the hours. You need to say in here who has the authority to make exceptions. You can't just leave it that vague, or you're going to be in trouble. Not with this neighbor group, and not with this York Administration, but that's not why you write policy. You write policy for what if. You write policy for the situation where you could have a York Administration that just didn't give a whatever about neighbors and just was going to do whatever they wanted, which is why the neighbors want to have something like this in writing. You write policy so that when the neighborhood change over, if the neighborhood were to change over, and you wouldn't have this particular group of thoughtful, reasonable people, but you might have some people who would never want you to do an outside rental at all, or would never, you know, wants to shrink the hours to whatever. I think a lot of those things need to be nailed down before this policy becomes part of the Board policy. And again, whether or not you want to have it here or make it much more general and just say that the group is going to meet every year, that's a great policy. They're going to meet every year during the summer, they're going to look at this, this, and this, and they're going to decide on it. Now, is that going to mean a lot of change every year? No, not necessarily. Of course, they're going to start with what they had in the past. Maybe there's changes. Maybe there are things that have come up that this Board and that group can't even anticipate. But you want to write a policy that's going to carry over. You know, if you all of a sudden need to move your time from 9:00 to 9:30 because of an IHSA rule, you have to revise your policy. That takes months. It's a, you know, it's a horrible process, for good reason. But I don't think, I wouldn't be able to approve this particular document as it stands. I also, of course, had my requisite number of little, you know, parallel usage construction of the words. I had all of that, which I gave to your committee chair. But there are substantive things in here that I think need to be looked at. I think it needs more work.
Mr. McDonough?
The thing I forgot to add, Dave's credit, Dave said that in order to show commitment to the committee, to the community, the community wants to know the Board is on board with the letter of what's in here. Yes, we are on board with the letter of this. The question is, what's the proper thing? I'm just wondering if an agreement authorized by the full Board to the Administration, and they can drill down on they can drill down on some of these things, especially the parallel usages, that just blows my mind. You know, they could drill down on what does the exception process look like? Or give them commitment that this Board won't just zip out, because as policy, we could change it tomorrow. And I don't think you want that. You know? So that's why I'm saying this isn't the right animal for what you want. But trust me, the commitment of this Board to file the letter of that at this point is right there, and we're going to do that. And maybe the policy reads something like, we authorize this agreement with the community and direct the superintendent to comply with it and to make exceptions in a collaborative form, or something like to that extent.
One idea, piggybacking onto that, I mean, we have intergovernmental agreements with other governing bodies, and there's nothing to say that the Advisory Committee is not an institution, if you will, that we can enter into an intergovernmental agreement where we have procedures around it, where the Board commits to saying that we want to be good stewards. I have no problem with put a policy in place that is not as detailed, that says that we have facilities that we want to work with organizations to make them as available as we can, but then come up with an official Board-approved document signed by Board members so that you feel more confident of the longevity of that document. I mean, we live by intergovernmental agreements that go back, so I'm sure that there's some vehicle that we could use. But again, it's up to the will of the Board. This won't come up to Susan and I to vote on. So that's my sage advice, having spent a lot of time on policy.
Mrs. D'Aroni?
Can I just ask a couple of questions? In this paragraph on outside rentals, where you talk about approval and you mentioned the Y CAC, was it the intent of the committee to say that whoever is at that meeting has veto power? Because that, this is how that could be interpreted. That, I mean, you don't say how many people are on the committee, you don't say how many neighbors are invited to come, but, you know, you could have a neighbor that perhaps all the other neighbors disagreed with, but yet came in and said no, or yes, or, you know, this does not protect either the neighbors or the district, in my mind. I'm just, I just don't want to end up with something in our policy manual that really doesn't do what both groups want at this point. So I would be very, very careful in the language if you end up putting this into a policy, to spell out the makeup of the committee and how those decisions will be made, what approval means, so that you don't end up with just perhaps one Board member or one neighbor being able to control the whole group.
Mrs. Stufan.
I do want to make one point of clarification. From the time that we talked about this committee, this new policy in our committee meeting and the particular end product of the policy that's brought before us, there was some development in review, which defines Y CAC and the membership of it, that is not in the document of the policy, but is in Board docs as a description, and it was in the policy that we, as the committee, got. So I agree that we do have to define it in the policy or in the same document.
That's not what I'm hearing. That's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing the Board, I think the consensus of the Board is take this back. It's not appropriate for policy.
Correct.
And rework this some other way. Is that what I'm hearing, is consensus of the Board?
There's a lot of different ways to do it.
Let me clarify. I fully support memorializing the agreement and outlining and committing, you know, if you put it in front of me tonight, the agreement, I would be more than happy, just not, policy just isn't where it lives in the way that we govern education. I mean, it's just not the right vehicle. The agreement, I wholeheartedly support, and if there were a 12-page document which lays out the organization, all of the rules, the terms, and it was fine with on the community's side, it was fine on our side, I have no problem fully endorsing the details of the agreement. It's not the agreement that I have any issue with at all. It's just where it's going to live, and that's governance.
Come on up to the mic, please.
While he's walking up, I don't know that we've heard from everybody on whether or not this is a policy, this is the right place.
I have a couple of comments that I wanted to toss in, too.
Do we need to make some sort of rule acknowledgement that we're, I mean, no, I meant procedurally, never mind.
I'm just waiting.
Please, go ahead.
My father, you may know Fred Gills, was principal at Sandberg for a lot of years. He was a country boy, and he made a lot of mileage on, I'm just a country boy here. So I'm going to ask you kind of a country boy kind of a question. I'm going to take a tact that Fred probably would have taken. So here is the ways in which, and I say I'm looking at it, but again, I'm serving as a representative of the committee, which is also well-represented by the principal of the building, the athletic director, the band director, Frank is a member of that committee, Superintendent's a member of that committee, a group of us who are neighbors, other groups who are teachers and boosters. So it's a pretty nice, well-balanced group. I would concur, it would be good to define that, to find those roles, to say exactly who are these people and how many of us are. There's probably 20 of us that have worked for the past two years on this. But it does represent the wishes of all of us as one. The crux of the problem, as I see it, is you have some need for specificity to keep this harmonious structure that has worked magnificently for the last year and a half. And some of that specificity is very detailed. When the lights go on, when the lights go off? How much is the P A system used? Who uses the P A? What do you play on it? What do you not play on it? And those are the kinds of things that this group is really satisfied with where we are now. And we want to lock into a form where there would have to be an extraordinary effort to alter that. By extraordinary, I mean you might have to come to your school board, and a case may have, must be pleaded, and then you'd have to have the agreement of the committee and the agreement of the school board before you would change that. We don't want it, and when I say we, I mean the group of us, we don't want it to be vulnerable to, you know, a new group of neighbors comes in, or we have a new athletic director, and he says, well, shoot, why shouldn't we have music on warm-ups while the kids are doing their warm-ups? Then all of a sudden, five days a week, we've got music blasting out, and we would like it to we, all of us. It's nice for a principal, too, when a new athletic director comes in to say, this is our document, this is our understanding, this is, as we were looking at it, as Board policy, these are the guidelines you have to follow, period. Now, my question is, how do we accomplish that? If it's not done as a policy, how do we accomplish that so no single individual can begin altering the nature of what we've built over the last year and a half, and it's working tremendously? How would we do that? We thought it would be in a policy, but perhaps not.
Thank you very much. And then we're going to continue our discussion and then move from here. So again, at the end, I have a few thoughts I'd like to contribute as well. So Mrs. Hirsch and then Mr. McDonough.
It's very simple. In many of our policies, we actually are bound either by law or by contractual agreements that we have with our bargaining units. And many times, we say, refer to the details, and we name an agreement document. We name a specific, you know, the teachers' union contract that we have. So there's no problem in policy stating the intention and the global intention of the Board, and then referencing a specific document, and then that document can be provided, can be on the website, can be produced. So I think it's a simple fix. It's just the will of the Board.
Mr. McDonough.
I don't mean to keep going back. And what we do, if you had a corporate entity, we'd make an agreement with you, and then we couldn't change. Not even the Board could change it without your consent. That's how we do it. But you're not a corporate entity, so what do we do in the absence of that? But what I'm thinking is, if you guys would be willing to work with us, I suggest we send this back to committee to come up with the proper vehicle and bring it back to the full Board. And maybe it's in the nature of a resolution as opposed to policy, a resolution that specifically directs that no changes shall be made to this specific understanding without working with and getting a consensus of the neighbors and the involved stakeholders, whatever that should look like, in the absence of having a corporate entity to make a binding agreement with.
Yeah. So, I mean, the consensus that I hear in the Board, and I'm going to throw in my own comments as well, is that maybe we should take a look and come up with a way to achieve what everyone wants to achieve, but do it in a little more elegant way than just to stick it in the policy manual. I think we're so successful here because we actually sat down and talked to our neighbors, formed a committee, had some structure around it, but we talked and we listened. And I think our policy needs to emphasize the talking, the listening, the frequency in which we do that. And then what's agreed to could be a separate document, even referenced in the policy manual, even published in the policy manual, but allowed to change as times change. That's not the will of the Board, but is the will of all of the constituents involved. And I will point out that it is our neighbors at the high school, and it's also the other taxpayers that use our facilities as well. And we need to listen to everyone, and we need to, it's our job to come up with an elegant mechanism that allows us to listen to everyone, reach a mutually agreeable consensus, and allow us to become and stay good neighbors with our neighbors at each of our school facilities. So with that, why don't we agree to send it back to the Policy Committee to come up with a more elegant format for this that still achieves what everybody's trying to achieve here, is a lasting document that is not, that is not subject to arbitrary change without mutual consensus. And I have to believe there's many ways to solve that. So with that, we take a vote on, I guess procedurally, we should take a vote on this. If it fails, we send it back to committee.
Point of order, you never had a motion. There's nothing on the floor.
That's a very good point, Mrs. D'Aroni.
You can simply withdraw it.
So since we don't have a motion, we can just send it back to committee. Thank you for pointing that out. So is that the consensus of the Board that I hear?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I do want to thank our administration for working with our community, our neighbors, our users, to reach a consensus that works for everybody. And I can't encourage our administration enough to continue that. So the next item on our agenda is upcoming meetings, which I will point out, all of which occur in one of the three rooms that we currently occupy. So Tuesday, April 30th, is our Special Board of Education meeting, which is our reorganization meeting, where we will acknowledge and bid farewell to our outgoing members, swear in our incoming members, elect officers, and probably even have committee assignments by that point. Wednesday, May 1st, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, I'm sorry, and that Special Board of Education meeting is at 7:30 p.m. Wednesday, May 1st, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee will meet at 7:00 p.m. Not on my copy. That's canceled. Tuesday, May 14th, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 p.m. Thursday, May 16th, the Performance Management Committee meeting at 7:00 p.m. And Tuesday, May 21st, the Finance and Operations Committee at 6:30 p.m. Sure.
Assuming that the Board wants to go ahead with the model that we used for the Superintendent's performance evaluation last year, the Performance Management Committee meeting on May 16th is going to be a closed session meeting. Okay. Just wanted to.
Okay. That is finished with upcoming meetings. Next is action on closed session. We have one item out of closed session. I'm sorry, Mrs. Stufan.
Can we clarify that April 29th, we will be having the Board Improvement Policy Committee meeting?
Okay. April 29th, we will be having the Board Improvement Policy meeting.
At 7:00, 7:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you. So on the item of student residency from closed session, Mrs. Hirsch.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the findings and recommendation of the hearing officer's report and find that students A H and Y P are not residents of the school district because said students are not and have not been residing within the school district's attendance boundaries on a regular fixed basis since the beginning of the 2007-2008 school year. As a result, I further move that students A H and Y P be disenrolled on Friday, April 26th, 2013, and that tuition be charged, beginning with the 2007-2008 school year in the amount of $66,049.11 for A H, and beginning with the 2012-2013 school year in the amount of $4,522.50 for Y P, for a total reimbursement of $70,571.61.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ebner. Yes, you are. All right. Thank you. All right. So moved by Mrs. Hirsch, seconded by Mrs. Ebner. This requires a sort of... Mrs. D'Aroni, you're shaking your head. Do we need a roll call vote here? We do not. All right. Very good. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is Board Communications. Does anyone, I have one item that I want to bring up, but does anyone have any others? No? I received a note from the Resolutions Committee of the Illinois Association of School Boards asking our Board if we had any resolutions or amendments to a position statement that they have, reaffirmations, or a belief statement that we would like to submit to the Illinois Association of School Boards, and if we can refer this to the proper committee, perhaps, to decide if we have something. But... But hearing none, then if we have ideas, come see me. Otherwise, we can, we're not under any obligation to submit anything. All right. Are there any other items under Board Communications? Hearing none, and being at the end of our published agenda, I can declare this meeting adjourned. adjourned.